That Dan Dwyer is not here. He's being, he hasn't been excused. Even though he's in a nice warm place that we hope it's raining on him at the moment. But no, only kidding.
Unlikely.
Unlikely. Yeah, even if it is raining, it's still nice. And Eileen, the town manager, Cabanel has also been excused. Okay, announcements. Wednesday, March 15th at 7:00 PM in James Mastacola Upper Elementary School. All purpose room will be the town deliberative session. On Thursday, March 23rd at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular town council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Tuesday, April 11th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the three polling locations. Remember, that is consistent now. We are doing three location, three polls at all times. James Mastacola Upper Elementary School, the Merrimack Middle School, and St. John Newman Church. Again, that is voting day. Please contact the town clerk office at 424-3651 or visit the New Hampshire Secretary of State website to find your specific polling location. Okay. Any other announcements, Paul?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. 2017 dog licenses are now available. All dogs four months and older are required by state law to be licensed. Please contact the town clerk's office with any questions. The annual Easter egg hunt will take place on Saturday, April 8th. Plans are underway to give out more than 5,000 Easter eggs this year. The library will be hosting the Michael Vermeer Memorial Foundation Annual Computer Clinic on Saturday, March 25th from 9:00 to 1:30 PM. This is an opportunity to have a trained computer technician solve your technical problems during a one-on-one session. Please visit the Merrimack Library's website at www.merrimacklibrary.org for details. The Highway Division is seeking applications for four summer maintainer positions to maintain athletic fields and park areas. If you know of anyone, or if you are interested, please visit the town's website and fill out an application. The Public Works Department is also selling compost bins and rain barrels at a discounted price. Orders need to be placed by March 24th. Details can be found on the Public Works Facebook page, or the town website, or by calling Public Works. And last but not least, the Merrimack Chamber of Commerce will be hosting their annual Spring into Chic Fashion Show and Expo on Thursday, April 6th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Courtyard by Marriott in Nashua. Fashions from local boutiques and the Merrimack Premium Outlets will be featured. Our own Parks and Rec Director, Matt Casperius, Police Chief, Mark Doyle, and Library Director, Avette Crozier, as well as yours truly, have agreed to participate as models.
That alone is worth it.
I've been working the catwalk in my house.
So you're gonna be the chick or the cheek?
I have no idea yet.
Stache a Chantay.
The Chamber will be awarding one $500 cash scholarship to one participant from Merrimack High School, excuse me, senior, who takes part in this event. And it will be emceed by WMUR's Kevin Skarupa. Please visit the Chamber of Commerce website at www.merrimackchamber.org for information where to purchase tickets. Thank you.
Okay, one other thing here I want to read. Bear with me. This has to do with the PFOA update. I had asked Eileen to call the Department of Health and Human Services to get an update. Asked her how many blood samples had been drawn, how many did they have to 200 yet. Also wanted to ask them about whether they would be receptive to volunteers, because it's gone on quite a while, and if they were not able to get to the 200. I know that there were people who were interested in volunteering, so this is a response that I want to read into the record. As of Friday, and this is from Jake Leon from the Department of Health and Human Services to Eileen. As of Friday, March 3rd, the DHHS Public Health Lab had received 145 blood samples from MVD customers as part of the random sample program. 250 MVD customers have registered. We share the concerns of the Merrimack Town Council and MVD customers who are anxious for results on the sampling program, and we are continuing and increasingly effort, increasing our efforts to get 200 randomly selected customers to participate. Understanding that MVD customers who have already had their blood tested are likely anxious to get results, we are going to send emails to all who have had their bloods tested, updating them that the process is ongoing, and emails to all who've registered but not had their blood tested to remind them that they need to act. To date, we have sent letters of invitation to 700 randomly selected MVD customers. Additionally, next week, the department will send letters of invitation to an additional 300 randomly selected MVD customers. While I can certainly appreciate the interest of MVD customers who want to volunteer, it is important that this program continue as a random sampling of MVD customers to ensure that the results accurately represent the entirety of the MVD customer base. The goal of this program is to randomly sample MVD customers and have a representative percentage of participants who live near the St. Cobain site and further away. The sample also draws invitees by other demographic factors, including time spent as an MVD customer. So there is a cross-section of people who have been in public water for a long period of time and a short period of time. This is all to ensure the results accurately show the impact of contamination around the St. Cobain plant on all MVD customers, not just, not just self-selected volunteers or customers near the contamination. As soon as we allow people to volunteer, this will no longer be a random sample and the data will not be as valid, which is what we hypothesized anyway. I hope the above makes sense. DHHS is conducting the sample program out of a sincere desire to understand the impact of PFC contamination MVD customers, and we are very anxious to reach 200 participants in order to deliver data that is meaningful to MVD customers, Merrimack residents, and town officials. Okay, so that answers all of our questions. So obviously, they've sent out 750 invitations, and although they've had some registered, only 145 have had blood samples done. So they keep on trying. We're getting closer, but there's the answer. In fact, you can add that to that for the record. Okay, comments from the press are public. Seeing none. Recognition, resignations, retirements, none. Appointments. Annual review with the Highway Safety Committee, Chief Doyle. Per Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Highway Safety Committee. This agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or act upon. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. How are you this evening?
Very well, thank you.
Members of the council, Paul. Before I get into this, I just wanted to say that some of you may recall Mark Briggs, who was a police officer here way back in the 80s. I know Finley probably remembers Mark from a number of years ago. Mark passed away last week. He had been a police officer here for a number of years, and then moved on to the Transit Authority in Boston, and had worked and retired from the MBTA police. And I believe he had been living outside of the state. He's being waked tomorrow afternoon from 4:00 to 8:00 at Rivet's Funeral Home for those folks that are, that are interested in his handling. Our thoughts and prayers from the Merrimack Police go out to his and his family. But I just wanted to pass that along to you folks.
Thank you.
And so far as the Highway Safety Committee goes, I just wanted to kind of recap real quickly what our purpose, our mission, and our charge are. We have in place a highway safety program that's designed to reduce traffic accidents resulting in deaths, injuries, and property. Our primary mission is to investigate, deliberate, educate, and provide recommendations on highway concerns, complaints, issues, or questions raised by residents or town officials in accordance with its purpose. And our charge, when the Highway Committee, Highway Safety Committee was formed, is to provide advice and direction to the town council regarding highway safety improvements, alterations, and ordinances, and any other items related to its mission and purpose that may require the council's action. The members are made up by myself as the chair, Paul Knickza, Glenn Wallace, Mike Currier from the Merrimack Fire Rescue Department, Don Tuomala from the Public Works Department, Bob LaRue, Fran LaRue, Bill Godfrey, Tim Thompson from the Community Development, Tom Tussow from the School District, and Finley Rothaus, our council representative, who also meets regularly with us. We had one meeting last year, and the reason we had one meeting is we really had only a few things to address, and I'll talk about some future projects, issues that we have coming up that we'll be addressing in our spring meeting. Basically, what we did is we ended up having the opportunity to discuss the DW Drive Horseshoe Pond access. As you know, there's some issues down there with the way that the road is designed and how folks have a tendency to kind of bypass the backed-up traffic and use that as kind of the passing lane. We did have a stop line, or excuse me, a stop sign installed down there pursuant to a discussion we had at the Highway Safety Committee. And we also were able to connect with the landscapers down there with some sightline issues associated with that little connection, that little access between DW Drive and Daniel Webster Highway. There were some bushes and some shrubbery there that needed to be trimmed back, which we're taking care of. There was a stop sign request that I talked about that was supported by the Highway Safety Committee and supported by the council that was installed at the corner of Island Drive and DW Drive. We had a little chat about the update on the Exit 13 discussion. I know Finley's very well aware of the Exit 13 off-ramp and that kind of merge thing that happens right there. The folks from the Department of Transportation, Bill Lambert specifically explained that they're currently satisfied with that off-ramp configuration and plan no new modifications at this point. However, time will tell, and in the event that it looks like they need modifications, they'll certainly address it then. We talked about Penny Lane Abbey Road site distance updates, which Kyle took care of with the Public Works Department folks. We met with Nelson Disco of the Town Center Planning Committee. We talked a lot about the ongoing TAP grant project that they have going on, the sidewalk proposals that they have coming up, an update on the National Regional Planning Committee. Bicycles and pedestrians plan through the center of Merrimack. It was very well received by the members of the Highway Safety Committee to get an update on what the, the programs are that are out there, and the complete streets and heel programs that are being adopted by the state and some other cities around the, around the state. There was a stop sign request at the corner of Everest and Doll Road that we looked at. Apparently, it was a apparent sightline issue, according to the person who made the complaint, brought it to our attention. But when it was reviewed, we found out, A, that there was never a stop sign there, B, that there was never a stop sign that had ever been approved to be there, and it was in the opinion of the members of the Highway Safety Committee that because there was no need to erect one, there was no need to want to put there at all. There was a stop sign issue at the corner of the Commons parking lot that rolled out into Front Street, right to Front Street. Bottom line is, is even though that's not an authorized or enforceable stop sign, because it's not anything that the police department authorized, that the Highway Safety Committee authorized, or was adopted by ordinance, the folks at the, at the Commons, including the folks at Tractor Supply, were very much willing to work with us and put and erect a brand-new stop sign there so that it will at least give folks that are egressing out onto Front Street an opportunity to take note and to stop before they moved into that, into that lane of travel. We had a handicap sign request on Laurel Street that we took care of and approved. There was an individual who, a family who resides there that wanted to have the handicap sign erected, and it's actually called a W-11-9 sign, which was approved for the area, that the Public Works Department will install and will have a reflective review every five years to make sure that it's still appropriate to keep that sign in place. We talked about some safety conditions and some of the existing roads that were brought to Public Works' attention, which they have taken care of. We also spoke about monitoring the continued development and how it's impacting the curve on Pearson Road right near Lyons Road. As you come into town from Bedford into Merrimack on Pearson Road, just before you get to Lyons Road, or should say just after you get to Lyons Road, but just before you get to Bedford Road, the road really curves sharply right there at that point, and almost if you're not aware of the road design, it looks like you could end up in the backyard of somebody's new house because of that new development on Hamilton Drive right there. The suggestion was to take a longer, harder look at that, especially as we go through the winter, to find out if it's a problematic issue relative to accident increases or road hazards associated with that design, and if there needs to be anything else in place, maybe to the extent that a guardrail has to be installed, or more signage, or other warning notification of traffic along that road. So we'll be taking a little look at that at our next meeting. A couple of future issues. There was a streetlight request that's actually sitting on the, the table of the Public Works Department right now at Glenwood Drive. The concern from the resident over there is that it's a heavily populated area in the sense that there are a lot of kids and families that use that area on bicycles and skateboards and some other things. But there are a lot of folks that use that as a cut-through between Babusak Lake Road and Joppa Road. And her concern, when she brought it to our attention, is that even though the kids are out there at night, some people will get into the neighborhood, get lost because they're not familiar with the area, and it could pose a potential safety issue. Though first, an initial response was that we generally don't install streetlights in neighborhoods per se. We install them at the major intersections, and we'd be looking at it from that perspective. However, we want to make sure that folks know that it's just not an automatic disqualifier. We will still have this discussion amongst our membership at the Highway Safety Committee regarding any suggestion that folks bring to us. And we're actually doing a speed study right now on Lawrence Road for a complaint that came in just recently relative to speeding vehicles along that stretch between, it looks like the curve right at, I can't remember the new, the name of the new road right there, just before you get to the Barnes property on the right-hand side, and that straightaway as you accelerate up to, or potentially could accelerate up to, West Road. But we're looking at that area right now. We're gathering some data, so we'll have that information available for the folks when we have our next Highway Safety Committee. And that really does wrap it up. Like I said, our next committee meeting is coming up in the spring. We haven't planned the date yet, but we do have a couple of things that we want to address and move forward. Does anybody have any questions?
Jackie?
Yes, I have wondered if the Highway Safety Committee had ever considered the traffic quieters. They're not roundabouts, but they're just little, you have to go around like a planner or something in a residential area. Some cities have, have done that, and I think it does tend to slow traffic down without stopping it. If you're going to speed limit, you probably won't even have to put your brakes on.
That's an interesting idea. What I'll do is I'll make sure that that's brought up when we talk about that issue, especially on the Greenwood Drive piece, and see if that's something that could be looked at, and maybe do a little bit more research into that and what's happening in other towns, and see if it is working and what their data represents.
And people might think it's such a pain in the neck to cut through that they'll, that they'll stop driving through those neighborhoods.
Check with the city of Concord.
Do they have it?
They've done a lot, they've tried a lot of traffic calming, what they call traffic calming. And one was to put, extend corner curbs as you go down the street, so you're effectively, you're doing this down the street. They took them out six months later.
Oh, no.
So don't investigate it as a boy.
Well, you know.
Yeah, probably was a son of a gun during the winter trying to plow those.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Didn't make it to winter. It's a connecting street between State Street and, what's the one? I don't know, it takes you almost all the way down to Main Street. It's one of the main drag, it's a quick way to get over there from that end of, that end of town. But they did try that. They spent all this, had all these public hearings and all this other stuff, spent all the money to put it in, and within six months, they were taking them out.
Nashua has one on Main Street, now that I think of it, near the railroad track.
But that's a walking?
And it's also.
That's for walking path. That makes it so the pedestrian has to pause to go around.
Yeah, it does. They can go halfway across and then wait for, yeah.
You never know what you might find. Any other questions? Phil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, just to follow up on the, on the Exit 13 issue, I appreciate you following up, and I disagree with the response from the Department of Transportation. I guess the, only because my experience last week of getting off, coming southbound, and always getting broadside there, again, it's just, it's an anecdotal story. Has there been, did you look at any, did the town of Bedford collect any data relating to any accidents that occurred there? I know a couple of years ago, you know, it was a, it was a lousy day. It was like snow, ice, the whole shoot match, and there was actually a rollover from northbound traffic getting off there, and it was literally, guy rolled over, slid off and rolled over three times, based on what was told to me. So I'm just curious to know if, was there any conversation with Bedford for accident data?
We, when we first reviewed, or visited this issue, we actually met with the folks from DOT, Bill Lambert, the chief from the Bedford Police Department. Shortly after that, on-ramp became live, and they didn't have any accident data at all, meaning there was none. But that was early on.
Right.
I would imagine that they have something now. And I'm not sure whether it's actually the town of Bedford that would have it, or state police, but I can check and I can make sure that we actually have that available, and talk about that maybe even more detail at our next meeting.
I just, I.
It's hard to believe that they haven't been.
Here's, here's an individual, I don't know the individual, he's a professional. Okay, he's, he's, I gotta presume, not assume, but presume, he's an engineer, and that they would be able to see the difficulty it is for cars to negotiate coming, coming through that particular area, and not even to remotely say, let's take a, take a stab at it.
It's designed to their standard. If it's designed to their standard, there's, that's it.
Well, their original conversation with the committee, well, not with us directly, but the correspondence we received, they were contemplating digging back the embankment so that you had a, as you came southbound, you could see the traffic heading northbound into your way. And then the next piece of correspondence was, there's no problem. But I, I believe they do recognize it, but I think it's a money issue, like everything.
I think the saving grace here, and knock on wood, is that by and far, the people that use that on-ramp, off-ramp configuration are aware of the potential, and they're all very cognizant of doing the old over-the-shoulder kind of thing because of that berm issue that we spoke about.
Yep.
And the folks that are coming northbound are cognizant to know that there's a line of sight issue, so everybody's very careful when you got that at the point where you need to do that crossover thing. And I think that's what has been very helpful, is that the people that use it the most are wise enough to know that they're getting into a situation, they really have to take a time to look at what's going on there.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And my guess is it is, it is adequate for the speeds that they're posted there, but nobody goes those speeds, so it's not adequate for the drivers that are there.
Right.
And to Councilor Mahon's point, it was pursuant to the specs that they established, and until somebody says otherwise, or tells them otherwise, or shows them otherwise, I think that's where it's going to remit.
All set? Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Chief. Next, annual review with the Heritage Commission. Anita Etall. Submitted by Heritage Commission Chair Anita Currier. Per Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Heritage Commission. Welcome, and I'll let you do the introductions. Yeah, seems like a year ago, did it?
Yeah, time's flying, and we haven't.
It sure does. Anita.
I'm sorry.
I don't think your, I don't think your mic is on.
Oh, you're right.
There we go.
Thank you. I was looking, it looked like it wasn't bright enough. Thank you. This was the report that was submitted in December, early December for the year, but there are some updates that we can give you now because things have changed since December, as always. We ended the year with four full members and a liaison. Finley is our liaison. Ralph is our newest full member. Hi, Ralph. We remember you. You came in the full regalia.
Yep.
What happened?
We still have one more opening.
He won the war. He doesn't have to wear the uniform.
We still have one more opening for a full member, and we still have openings for the alternates. So we did decide last year that we were going to change our meeting nights to be only every other month because we're having trouble getting attendance. We did have eight meetings last year, but one had no quorum. That was part of the problem, and probably will continue to be a problem. Let me put it a challenge. We don't have problems, we have challenges. The tour brochures for all of the villages have been completed. We've printed over 4,000. As of now, I think it's closer to 5,000, because I keep calling Becky, need 100 more, need 100 more, need 100 more. They are available online, they're at the town hall, they're at the library, they're at the Historical Society, and in my purse, and I give a lot of them out, I even gave them to 50 people at the H&R Block, because we go to visit all the new homeowners, and we gave a set to each of those. So they are very popular, people are using them and asking about them, so that's good. The display case at the top of the stairway out here has a current display of Walter Kittredge's family and his descendants were here for a visit this past summer, and they brought some new stuff. There is a roll, a piano roll of his music. And pictures of his melodi and his violin, which is in their possession, but we have pictures of them. It'd be nice if we had them, but no, they, they need them more than we do. So it's very good. We also had a 1930's display at the library through October through December, when the library was doing a, a book that had to do with the 1930's, and other societies in the area were doing the same thing, so they asked us for a display. So we had some cool stuff over there. I hope somebody saw it, besides me. The plaque for the Penachuck Water Works showing the history of the village dam that was removed back in 2008 is still being stored at the town manager's office. It is behind the desk, it is very heavy, and it doesn't move very often, and it won't go anywhere until they decide how they're going to do the pass-through over to Watson Park. The intention right now is for it to be mounted on the wall in the, by the pass-through, so people see it when they're going by.
Nice.
But in the meantime, it's sitting there. We got it. The signage for the Chamberlain Bridge will be done when the sidewalk to the bridge is upgraded, whenever that's going to happen. The date keeps changing. At that time, some of the granite blocks on the east side will be removed, and the words Chamberlain Bridge will be put on there that will match the one on the other side that says Town of Merrimack. Because there's a lot of people that don't know that bridge has a name, and a number of people have actually requested that it be named after somebody. It already is, thank you. Okay, the Magar Bridge has been replaced, and the historical information sign is at that location. It's really nice. And there's a sidewalk there, so you can stop and read the sign. And the Bedford Road Bidge and the Dara Bridge. If you don't know what the Dara Bridge is, if you're driving over just past Pearson, past Pearson Road, you look down on the right-hand side, there's an old bridge down below. It's been there for a long, long time. It serves no purpose, but it can't be removed until the state says it can be removed, and it's going to. They're doing all kinds of questions, and everybody, you know, do you have any problem with it? But it has to go because as they do the bridge, they're going to increase the amount of water going through underneath the current bridge, and that one will make matters worse. We'll have flooding out there that shouldn't be. So that's going to be done. I have no problem with it. None of us have any problem with it. Hate to lose a historic bridge, but nobody knows it's there anyway. And I didn't even know the name for it until the state told me it was called the Dara Bridge. Okay. The John Cromwell Memorial Plaque on the property of Anheuser-Busch has been repaired and replaced. There is a survey map that we got from 1656. That's a long time ago. And we got a copy of it, we have a copy of it at the Historical Society, and I just realized today, we don't have one here at town hall, and you will soon. But we gave a copy of it to Anheuser-Busch because they want, at the time when they were getting ready to put the, the new, the whole thing changing, they said they were going to put it up. Now they say it just doesn't fit with their decor.
Oh, jeez.
Sorry. But I hope someday that thing will be there because it does show where John Cromwell's house was. It's the only thing on there that shows on the Merrimack River. There's nothing else that's labeled except the river and Penachuck. Oh, and Helen Wentz got that sign made, got the copies made of that. The portraits framed and mounted on the walls of the memorial conference room are there. I'm happy to say that they are up on the wall. There are still a couple tweaks that need to be done, a couple identification things that are not quite what they should be, but they'll get there, and we thank Jackie. She was the one behind all of that. We have some nice pictures, she's looking for more, and maybe we'll get some more pictures to add to it eventually. We're still preparing to put out the historical signs, you know, that go on people's houses. I still have one in my car that I could have brought in to show people. I still have one in my car that I could've brought in to show people what it looks like, but I think you've seen them.
Yeah.
Our plan was the homes on streets from E to M, but there are some that, from the past, that we missed, either because we didn't have enough information at the time, so nobody was asked, but there are a couple more going up. One of them will be the barn where the eyeglass place is. That barn is a historic barn, and it's never been identified. And they have said, "Oh, yes, we want that." Can you put a bigger one?
What's, what's the date on that?
I don't remember right now.
But it's been there forever.
It was the 1800s, I know that. The house that went with it is where Southern New Hampshire Services is, right, right there, next Little Small. But the house has been gone for some time, but the barn has been salvaged, is being used. I did not know that the attic is made to use.
Right.
They have air conditioning and everything up there, and they have high hopes. The owner has told me that he's in the process of converting that over to condos so that the occupants are gonna owe it, own it, and not him.
Oh, interesting.
So that is his goal, and he's hoping to have somebody up there in that attic that you can look at when you're driving by. So, that's an interesting one. The other one that never had a sign on it is Reverend Burnap's house. Our first minister, out there on Turkey Hill Road, the big barn right, or the big house with the barn, right at the corner by the bridge.
Yes.
And he was our first minister, built in 1771.
That's right.
So I have talked to the owner, who is completely refinishing it and going to be renting it or selling it, but he is willing to put a sign on it.
Please.
Okay, so we're, we're working on that one. So there's a couple more that we're working on. We have been trying for a couple years to get a corn crib that used to be on the Kent Farm and an ice house that used to be on the Mason Farm, and move them over to Wasserman Park. All of a sudden, Ralph, who lives on that street where the, where the corn crib was, said, "It's gone. It has disappeared." The owner moved, died, and they're cleaning everything out. But he just told me tonight he found it.
Oh.
It has been moved, and it's on, what's his name?
Wade Parks.
Wade Parks property, right next to the Kent Farm. So it's pretty close to where it used to be. So whether we'll get it and move it remains to be seen because I just found out that it was located, which is always good to know. Hate losing buildings when you don't know where they went to. We manned booths on the Fourth of July and at the Knights Columbus Craft Fair. We did make some money, but most of that is intended to be educational more than making money. The Historical Society Heritage Commission get two booths, side by side, and we, we run them as one booth. But the different money goes to different places. And we did have another historical scavenger hunt this year, and we had quite a bit of interest in it. We didn't run out of the little passports this time, like we did last year, when I was on vacation and they ran out. Greeting cards have been available at the craft fair and at town hall. We ordered some more of the books, The Images of America for Merrimack. It's a picture book, we ordered some more of those. Turns out, it was kind of neat. I saw an ad saying that for the next five days, they're for sale at 25% if you get 25 or more. So, real fast, I ordered 25. Because we were out and people asked for them. We have voted approval to create the granite welcome signs at the north and south entrances of town. They're in the hands of being made right now. And once we get through the spring, although when spring is going to really be here, I don't know. But anyway, the ground is thawed enough to be able to do it, so we will work on it. I've got to work with Kyle on getting the exact location that can be worked on because DOT has a certain number of feet that things have to be from the center line. Not from the edge of the road, but from the center line. And every time I ask and conquered, I get the runaround, so we'll get Kyle to give us the answers. But they are granite, they do say, "Welcome to Merrimack." Four villages, one town. And they will be in addition to the ones that the Chamber of Commerce has put out. And probably in both cases, closer to the town lines, probably. We're working on it. We, our newest member in the report was Sean Sylvester, who had proposed a contest to design a town flag, and now I see that Manchester is doing the same thing.
Oh, really?
I thought in the paper last, a couple weeks ago. But nothing has happened. Sean did apply, approached the art department at the high school, and it was zero interest. So I haven't seen Sean since, he hasn't come to the meeting, so I'm not quite sure what's happening. And of course, our now newest member is Ralph. And Ralph has all kinds of cool stuff that he does. He loves history, he's a reenactor from the Revolutionary War. And he showed up here to be sworn in, wearing one of his outfits.
That's right.
Just for your information, we have much from the Civil War that has been donated to us. And sometime in April or May, we are going to be having an exposition-type of thing and inviting historical people to come that may be interested. There are about 50 books, a lot of clothing, 10 big pictures, prints. All, all this came from Gettysburg. So we're hoping that there are people that are gonna want them. Steve Claus gave us these things and told us we could do whatever we want with them. And we do not have room to display them long-term at the Historical Society, so we're gonna make them for sale. We are keeping the books that apply to Merrimack, that apply to New Hampshire. But all the others that are Massachusetts and Gettysburg and Maine and Vermont will be available for sale. He had quite a collection of books. As you see, the commission and the Historical Society work together on a lot of projects. I guess one of the things I've gotta make sure is that when we do something for one of them, they get into both records. Because we just do them all and then say, "Oh, we haven't done that yet." Because I went to the historical files today down in the community development and found that there's, there's things in there that we should've been adding to. So we gotta work on that. So, do you have any questions?
Questions?
Volume two.
Oh, you had to ask. It isn't making much progress. The problem is that every chapter was written by a different person, including you.
Yeah.
And everyone, every one of those chapters was written in the font that that person put it in, with the borders that that person put them in, and the size that that person put them in. And they all have to be the same before we can publish the book. So, I've done probably six of those chapters myself to make them all the same sizes. And we still have like 30 more chapters that, that need that done, and we've had...
Wouldn't you be able to have the office people help you? That doesn't, couldn't you have the office people help you?
Maybe.
The gear, Kristen?
We just haven't done it. We need to. We need to get it moving.
It's, it's time-consuming, it's just...
It is.
It's doggone.
It's all, but it's all digital, right?
One hopes.
It's all digital.
It is.
So it's a matter of putting into a consistent format.
There are many typo errors, there are many spelling errors.
Oh, well, that's, that's...
There are some factual errors.
That's a whole different ballgame.
All this, somebody has to check everything.
Okay, if it's editing, that's different than just formatting.
Now, we could pay a lot of money and have the publisher do that editing. But we had decided a long time ago that we were gonna do it ourselves, but it isn't just getting there. But everything is there, everything is available to be done. All the writing is done. But I know that there is some editing of facts as well as size. And the one who did all of the births, deaths, and all that, made them as one long column. It takes 48 pages. So that has to be completely redone, without losing the information in there, but we've gotta get it in a format that is printable. 48 pages full of that wide verse. Not the way it's gonna be. So, we're working on it.
Yeah, Anita, what is the book gonna look like when it's done? Is it gonna be hardbound?
It should be very similar to the, to volume one.
It's gonna be, oh, okay, hardbound.
Hardbound, same size, that's why we have to have the pages match, size-wise. It'll be the same as volume one.
Tom?
Never mind.
Tom did a great job on the railroads. I know we hounded him further.
There was no style manual. If they had a style, you gotta do it this way, this, this whole thing would've...
Yeah.
Not been eliminated, but greatly reduced. Because if I had known that you wanted it a certain type of font, I mean, you could even send this test...
We didn't really discover that until after we got yours and realized how cool yours is. He, he's got some beautiful font stuff and colors and pictures and everything else. We do have somebody that's gonna put the pictures in that will have to be added to it after we get everything else done. But the rest of it has to be done. So one of our members will put that. I'm not a technological person, you can tell. I like old-fashioned things. Like history and Boy Scouts.
Editing is definitely true. Formatting is not really that time-consuming, but if you're editing at the same time, that's a whole different ballgame.
Almost everybody who is in the Historical Society is within 10 years of my age, and many of them are not good with computers. Many of them are very good with English. Evelyn Barrett went through five, five or six chapters and corrected a lot of stuff.
Yeah, so the editing is not...
Yes, it's gonna take time, and we just don't have a lot of active members that are likely to be able to do that. We did have a couple young folks that said they were going to, and they went poof and disappeared.
Paul, do you wanna?
Yeah, I'm wondering if somebody, a place like St. Anselms College or Southern New Hampshire University, not Southern New Hampshire, but St. Anselms, who has a journalism, journalism program, would be interested in some kid coming out, some young adult student coming over and, you know, doing an unpaid internship or something of that sort. I know they're always looking for interns.
Yeah, for the last three years, we have asked for interns to help with the stuff that we do over there. We've asked, we had one from Keene State one year. She came for about 20 hours a week and set up our filing system. I've asked at Thomas More because they're really into the, that kind of thing.
Right, the local.
But I haven't had any bites. They always tell me, we put it up on the bulletin board, it's, it's available to them. So I'll keep trying, because that is the kind of thing that we need.
I just know the career development offices, if you contact CNEs or even Southern New Hampshire, they're always looking for jobs like that.
Right. I'll get to you, and who to get.
Any other questions, comments? None. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Again, welcome to the committee. And Anita, as usual, thank you for all of your time and work that you put into it.
Well, that's good. Thanks a lot.
That helps.
This is not worse, this is fine.
Thanks, Anita.
Okay, public hearing. Public hearing for the 2017 Mill Foil Grant Funds for Horseshoe Pond and Natick Lake, submitted by Planning and Zoning Administrator Gillian Harris. Hi. The town council will hold a public hearing to accept and authorize the expenditure of up to $12,244 of the grant from the Hampshire DES for mill foil control via diver-assisted suction harvesting, known as DASH. In addition to the town's matching share of $28,569 this fiscal year for DASH for variable mill foil control efforts in portions of Horseshoe Pond and Natick Lake. This totals $40,813. We ask that the town's share be expended from the Mill Foil Capital Reserve Fund pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. Hi there.
Hello. Thank you for having me.
Very welcome.
It's mouthful, but we're basically here for the annual mill foil discussion and to ask the town council to accept and authorize the expenditure of a grant from DES in addition to authorizing the town's matching share for mill foil control in both Horseshoe Pond and Natick Lake. Both of the water bodies have been managed annually for mill foil since 2012, and they've used a variety of chemical and non-chemical techniques. But it's an ongoing issue, it needs maintenance work, and that's necessary to keep the infestation from increasing and to keep mill foil to a minimum. Natick Lake continues to trend well in terms of reduction with the diver-assisted suction harvesting, or DASH. And once again, that is recommended for treatment this year at Natick. Unfortunately, last year, Horseshoe Pond showed a significantly increased infestation. So this year, they are recommending that we do another herbicide treatment. This will help to reduce the density and distribution of mill foil to a more manageable level, and then they would follow up with DASH as needed at the end of the summer or early fall. So that's an overview of what the recommendations are. With respect to the grant funding, DES has selected solitude lake management for herbicide treatment at Horseshoe Pond and AB Aquatics for DASH management at both water bodies, which we have used in the past. The grants are awarded at a 30% matching level, and Merrimack has been awarded $12,244 for the total estimated amount of treatment needed this year at $40,813. So the town's share would be $28,569 to be expended from the Mill Foil Capital Reserve Fund. We have included a letter from Amy Smagula at DES in your packet that outlines history of mill foil treatment, as well as the recommendations. She is here this evening if there are any questions that come up about recommendations or the grant funding. And also, the information are maps which show where mill foil has been observed in each of the water bodies, as well as the bids from each of the contractors who are selected for treatment this year. So that is the broad overview of what we're asking.
Will they open the public hearing at 7:55? See the measure people. And it's closing at 7:56. Okay, council.
I'll move that the town council vote to accept and authorize the expenditure of up to $40,813 for the mill foil treatment program at Horseshoe Pond and Natick Lake, of which $12,244 is from a grant from the NHDES for mill foil control via DASH and herbicide. And the town's portion is $28,569 to be funded from the Mill Foil Expendable Capital Reserve Fund. And furthermore, the town council will authorize the town manager or her designate to execute any and all documents which may be necessary.
Seconded. Motion made by Tom Candy, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any discussions or questions? Finley?
Had, I'm just not recalling, had we had conversations about the, the match and as well the dollar amounts, or is this, is this the first foray into these numbers? Because the 40s...
We've had them before.
I think in the past, the numbers have been higher, but as the letter suggested, that there's so many people that need, that are applying for and needing support, that they're spreading the money out amongst the different communities, and so the amounts are smaller this year.
Because I didn't know the, the total amount had been that high in the past. I, I didn't recall it, so, and that's, that's fine, it's just me. I, I recognize the need for it. It's, it's, it's a terrible thing, but it's, I'm just a little...
It does seem to be climbing, yeah.
The total amount is higher, that's due to the herbicide treatment this year. Past few years, we've just been doing DASH. Yeah.
Because I know Natick, the residents really are very active in that kind of control.
And the first time, I believe, the herbicides were put down at Horseshoe Pond. The state picked up the...
A larger, much larger portion, like 70% or something.
Yeah, much larger portion. Now, this is the second time, so it's, it falls back to the town grabbing that larger portion.
Right, it's just the total amount seemed to be much higher than I ever recalled.
Yeah.
But it just took 60, so I just forget things now, I'm sure, so...
Jackie, did you...
Yeah, I was wondering, how much is in that town mill foil fund?
Paul?
Around $35,000.
Okay.
Around $35,000. And we've been, we fund it every year at around $10,000 or 25, depending on...
Yes, yes, I remember.
How much, how much the, the match is from the state following year.
Yeah, and my other question is, do you have any idea of why Horseshoe Pond is suffering some additional problems?
Amy might have more information on that, but I believe last year, the thought was that, that the warm winter had something to do with it. There, I think there was an early ice out, possibly a late ice in, and so there was more of a chance... There, I think there was an early ice out, possibly a late ice in, and so there was more of a chance for the milfoil to grow and spread, but.
Do you want to add anything, Amy, or is that?
Sure, you can come up there.
Yeah.
Again, just to identify yourself, will you?
Sure. For the record, my name is Amy Smagula, and I'm a freshwater biologist for the Department of Environmental Services.
Is the button? That's all right.
Oh, okay. There we go. Do you want me to repeat that?
Better.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, Madam Chair and committee members. So I've been active in milfoil and other exotic species management for about 20 years now, and I manage 85 lakes and ponds and rivers statewide. Unfortunately, invasive species are something that we typically can't eradicate, and because they are an adaptive native species, invasive species, and lake systems are not predictable. We do have sometimes boom and bust cycles in growth, and as Gillian explained, if you all remember the winter of '26, we had a very late ice in and a very early ice out. So that allowed for a longer growing season for the milfoil. And for those of you who may have been on Horseshoe Pond, you know that it is full of native aquatic vegetation. So what happens sometimes is that the milfoil will hide in the native vegetation, making it more difficult for divers to seek out and find. And Madam Chair, as you mentioned, Natick Lake is very good with volunteers going out and repeatedly surveying and marking. So the diving efforts there worked really well because of the efforts of the volunteers. We don't have the same level of volunteerism on Horseshoe Pond, so unfortunately, we don't, despite state biologists going out and surveying, we don't often find every single plant. And as those are harbored amongst the natives, they have opportunity to expand. So the infestation got a little bit beyond the capability of the divers in the 2016 growing season in Horseshoe Pond, and it kept growing, and we had great growing conditions in 2016. And the divers recommended that we go back to herbicide treatment so that we can try to get it back under control. I know there are concerns relative to the budget. I typically budget for bigger treatments than we need to, and most often, we can scale back once I see actual field conditions when I survey in the spring. So the chances of expending everything are unlikely, and hopefully, it won't happen. But we budget it and plan for it just in case.
Jackie?
I was curious about Horseshoe Pond, that when we had the two years in a row, back in '07, I think it was, of flooding, I wonder if that clears it out from time to time?
No, unfortunately, the invasive is pretty adaptable. So if you have higher water levels, it will elongate and come to the surface and will continue to grow happily. If you were to completely drain the pond, it would revert to almost like a cactus-like form that's more succulent, and it would persist during the dry, dry drawdown exposure timeframe. So, and then it would go back to its normal underwater growth if you raise the water level. So unfortunately, there's not much other than regular management. And typically, we would do the herbicide treatments to reduce biomass and then have the divers just go in for routine maintenance at a much smaller scale, and that's, we're trying to get back to that point again.
Tom?
Yeah, I can, the same thing happened on the pond where my wife's property is in, back in Massachusetts, on Greenwater Pond. And the, last year, it was really bad, and that's what their, that's what the mass biologist said, is the fact that, you know, you didn't have this cold winter and those sorts of things, and so it encouraged the thing to grow. So they're, they're, they don't have any, I don't think they get any state aid because there's no public access to this pond. It's all private property. So the property owners association is the one that's proportionally splitting, you know, footing the bill to have this done around the lake. So from, you know, that standpoint, it's, you know, why the big bloom or the increase. I can tell you what happened on that part of your water, so, you know.
So would a cold winter help then?
No.
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 It's very, you're working it, aren't you?
There's, there's not much in nature that will inhibit the plants. They're, they're pretty hardy, unfortunately. That's why they do so well. The natives may take a hit from a really cold winter or high water or low water, but the invasives will adopt and overcome.
Therefore, the word invasive.
Exactly. Nuisance.
Okay, we have a motion made by Tom Kennedy, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That would be 6-0-0. Thank you very much, Gillian. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another public hearing, 2017 Abbey Griffin Memorial Fund for Fire and Police Departments. Come on down. Did Chief Doyle leave?
I guess we'll have to give away his.
I guess we'll have to give his stuff away. Nope, is it? The town council will hold a public hearing.
He wanted a lieutenant to show off his beard.
Which I like quite a lot.
On TV, right?
To authorize the acceptance and expenditure of funds from the Abbey Griffin Memorial Fund in the amount of, but not to exceed $15,000 for the purchase of emergency medical services, warm zone equipment such as ballistic helmets, protective vests, as well as equipment and supplies to outfit eight personnel to make up four warm zones EMS teams for fire department, and for gym equipment, such as a refurbished Cybex Arc Trainer, Power Rack, flat incline decline bench, I'm tired just reading it, utility bench, curl bar and straight bar, TRX Trainer, and a small flatscreen TV with mount. So I'll let the two of you, Chief Carrier, why don't you go first? Whatever. You may already have it all worked out.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Paul, thanks for having me here again tonight. This is a continuation of the program that we spoke at a previous council meeting with reference to the grant we got from the state of New Hampshire for EMS in the warm zone. Same information we looked at providing. This is just a continuation of that. This grant for, the Abbey Griffin is for $7,500 to continue that expenditure to outfit the teams with them, for equipment.
I think you mentioned that at the time, too.
Yes, I did. I did say that we'd be coming forth with that at the last meeting for the Abbey Griffin Fund. So a lot of us, nothing new, repetition, so if there's any questions that I can answer, I think Councilor Boyd had some last time he wasn't here. Nope.
I read your report. It was complete. I have no questions.
Okay, go right ahead. You're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. The police department is proposing to purchase new gym equipment. The last time we purchased gym equipment was early 2000s, and it's really seen age. A lot of it was donated. We've had to throw away several dumbbells because they've broken apart. This other equipment that's just sitting down there, that's, that's damaged and unreparable. So we're looking at purchasing the items listed in the, in the hearing. And this is important, remember, too, this is not for the police officers, it's also for our civilian employees. A lot of our civilian employees sit most of the day, so it's a way for them, after work, to get out and, and work, work out and hopefully lead a healthier lifestyle.
Of course, it's all civilians. It's not the, Mr. President.
No, no, it's for our members, too, but it's good to point out the ones that are more sanitary in the jobs.
Well, I understand. Okay, let me do, open the public hearing at 8:07. And again, the man rush. Close it at 8:08. Now I'll open. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lieutenant LeVek, where to get the LeMans Spin Bike? That ain't cheap. And that's a, that's a great, great piece of equipment.
Let's just say, of this power persuasion, I called around and see if we could strike the, strike the best deal we could. And we figured that would be a good piece of equipment to slide in and out of the studio. It's a very tight area, I'm sure if you guys.
Yeah, that was a couple, couple of the questions, a couple of questions I hear. We'll, we'll talk about the room. I've, I've been down there before. The room is awfully tight to begin with. Do you think with some of the new amenities that you're proposing, is going to be able to fit in that particular space? Does the council at some particular point need to consider something larger?
Sort of a new police station. I don't think we have any room for.
I understand that.
Though, the equipment that we picked out is all sized up for the room. We'll be removing some of the equipment. We're going to be losing a treadmill just to gain more floor space, to make it more functional.
And the other question is, you know, how often is the facility utilized by, by the police department and the people that work there?
A lot of officers on the overnight shift will either work out before, after shift. Some dispatchers use it after the shift, after day shift, you know. I'd probably say is used every day, at least, by one, one or two officers.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else entertain the motion?
I'd just say, in my obligatory comments, I always feel like I have to point out how much the Abbey Griffin Fund has done for the town over all these years and continues to do so. It was an every other year occurrence for the police, one year a fire, the next year, until the fund was apparently invested well enough to, to get a large chunk of cash. So every year now, I believe it's every year, both departments are able to take advantage of it. So she helped my wife, paid for half her college, basically, her fund did. And there's medical support, I believe, for families who have medical bills that they need help to offset and all. So she was pretty amazing, and that's why the park is named for Abbey Griffin, because my wife felt an obligation to have her recognized in some fashion, so.
Nice.
But anyhow, so very good.
Okay, entertain the motion now.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council authorize the acceptance and expenditure of funds from the Abbey Griffin Memorial Fund in the amount of, but not to exceed, $15,000 for the purchase of emergency medical service EMS, warm zone equipment, such as ballistic helmets, protective vests, as well as equipment and supplies to outfit eight personnel to make up four, four warm zone EMS teams for the fire department, and for gym equipment, such as a refurbished Cybex Arc Trainer, Power Rack, flat incline decline bench, utility bench, curl bar and straight bar, TRX Trainer, a small flatscreen TV with mount, and other small equipment for the police department pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. Furthermore, that the town manager and/or her proxy be authorized to sign any documents necessary to accept and expend the funds.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by?
Second.
Tom Mayhem. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. 6-0-0. And you two gentlemen are going to be coming up momentarily, so I might as well just say. Okay, legislative updates from state reps, none. Town managers report.
Well, I have a couple. Thank you, Madam Chair. Despite having no snow on the ground, the 25th, the 25th Annual Winter Carnival was a huge success. It was estimated that 600 people were in attendance, and in my 13 years here, about 600 people were in attendance. And in my 13 years here, it was the first time that the event was covered by WMUR. And they had news coverage the morning of the event, and then the Sunday morning after. So it was, it was definitely a well-thought-out event, and Mac Aspirus and his staff really made the most of not having any snow. Again.
It was warm that day.
That was the news, right?
Yeah, it was on the news.
No, no, that was the news.
That was, yeah, yeah, that was. Yes.
And warm weather that day.
Right.
Well, I had '86 in San Antonio, so I mean.
Rub it in. Go ahead.
The Public Works Department would like to welcome the following new members to their team, and I would like to apologize if I butcher any of the names. Kevin Montemini and Orion Bozvert in our Highway Division, Victor Rendez in our Solid Waste Division, and Chris Charidelli in our Waste Water Division. Welcome aboard.
You probably did butcher them. And please know that Paul McCauley is the one.
Mickely, yeah.
Mickely, yeah.
Sorry, guys.
Just making sure that we have the right person. Nothing, no consent agenda, no business. New business. Donation acceptance from the Merrimack Police Department. And where is Captain Roy?
She's on vacation, so I figured I'd say for her.
Good excuse.
She only filled out the paperwork.
Does she get in trouble for that?
She only filled out the paperwork. She didn't say she wanted to be here.
Town councils are considering the acceptance of a donation of a Panasonic Lumix DMC-F2300 digital camera, and I'll let you go through the specifics.
Thank you once again. Our digital cameras in the detective divisions are aging, and we haven't purchased a new digital camera for some time. This digital camera will be used for complex crime scenes and accident scenes. It wouldn't be a simple patrol camera. It'd be something for more, more complex. And we reached out to the members of the crime line, and they had agreed to purchase it for us. As you know, our relationship with the crime line is quite tremendous, and we support each other. So it would be the complete camera, the memory card, battery, a fingerprint attachment to photograph fingerprints of crime scenes, a hard case, an external flash, and it was to the amount of $900.
Any questions? Continue the motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the town council accept a donation of a Panasonic Lumix DMC-F2300 digital camera, Delken 16 gigabit memory card, ProMaster Panasonic battery, Titan fingerprint attachment, ProMaster hard case, and external flash from Merrimack Crime Line to the Merrimack Police Department, valued in the amount of $900 pursuant to Charter Article 8-15 and RSA 31:95-E.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by?
Second.
Tom Mayhem. And just to make it clear, obviously, Captain Roy is not here, but Lieutenant LeVek is here, just for the record, when they type it up. Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. 6-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And Chief Carrier? You got backup here, too? Town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation received from Digital Federal Credit Union, and I'll let you provide the specifics.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Counselors, Mr. McCauley. As you saw in the backup, we were fortunate enough to receive a, a check for a donation, a donation, and a check for $3,500 from Digital Federal Credit Union. And kind of the background of what we're looking to do here is, we've been looking at upgrading our portable electric fans for removal of smoke and could be odor gas, chemicals, or those types of things at all types of emergency calls. The ones we use are tried and tested. They're probably 50-year-old technology, and the ones we have are 20, 20 years old. They're cumbersome. They're hard to move around. They take a, a real hard, for lack of a better term, amp draw when they kick on. So our operating procedures are, we don't use house power for these fans because we could potentially damage someone else's. So we bring in our own power, which is definitely, you know, we have it on the trucks. It just takes time to do that. The biggest thing we see is, in the, in your back packet there, there's, we included the picture, not for the sale thing, so you could kind of understand the difference or what, what these things are. It's a 110 electric and a battery-operated fan that folds
Yep, I do think.
and easily deployed. The, for lack of, if you look at that picture, you, one person can easily slide it out of a compartment, take it into a scene, unclip it, flip it up. It's battery-operated. It's a smart charging type of unit. Turn it on, and the first time you see these things, you are amazed with the amount of, of volume of air they move. They're approximately three times more air than the current units we use. The weight is similar from what we have, but the ability, the ergonomics of moving it is, is amazing. So we had started looking at these, and maybe we were talking to the chief, and I brought him to him about, you know, in the future of cycle replacing these. So probably next budget cycle, and the chief may speak to this, we'd probably be coming, maybe putting it in the budget somewhere, kind of like our rescue tools we've done over time to upgrade our equipment. We're really looking to upgrade the stuff we have and the, make it as user-friendly as possible for our firefighters and our personnel, make it easy deploy, you know, operationally efficient, and then try to minimize some risks to our firefighters for injuries. And I don't want to bore you with some of the details, but our smoke ejector fans, they're very cumbersome. I, I did it for years, and we do it. You take them by yourself because of manpower issues, but it's just not an easy thing to carry, and it's really risking potential injury. So when we saw these, they actually, they were used in Merrimack by Mutual Aid. Nashua switched their ladder trucks over to them, and when they were turned on, you're amazed at how fast they can deploy them and the amount of air that they'll move. So we're looking the amount of air that they'll move. So we're looking to accept in the donation to purchase one of these and it kind of works out. It's in the ballpark. We can get one for that. They're expensive.
I guess. I didn't even tell you you were getting 10 or something.
Yeah, really.
No.
Because I was looking for numbers.
No, it's one unit. It'll get that done. But in fact, we had one of our captains when we started really discussing this and that we were going to come forward, he said, some other departments have used them. He looked at them, said, well, we'd probably never be able to afford those. I wouldn't even bring it up. But when we discussed it, the chief, myself and Assistant Chief, that way we can increase the efficiency, decrease the risk to our guys and our personnel, and make it more efficient. The battery time on these are, they're rated at between 20 and 80 minutes. Talking to departments that are using them, about 40 minutes before you'd have to recharge them. And it's as simple as, we could go get it started, turn it on, and it's just as effective for up to that 40 minutes. If we think we're going to be there a longer period of time, we can bring in our power. Or we would have the option to go into what's there.
Just to give you an idea of what the amp draw here, the ones we use now are between 20 and 25 amps. The amp draw on this one here is 7.6. The CFM on what we're using now is 3,500. The CFM on these units is 15,000.
Wow.
So being able to go to a house that had a carbon monoxide problem from a malfunctioning heating system, to move the air to make it safe in there for us to operate and get them back in their houses, it's just, it's just, the technology that we're looking at is huge. And as Assistant Chief Borman did mention, we talked about the rabbit tools and entry tools for rescue tools at previous meetings. This would be one of those things that, you know, would take that place. Okay, we've looked at that program and we have the rescue tools we need. Now we're looking at the exhaust ventilation program and how we can improve that for the citizens and the employees. And that would be that next program until we get that taken care of.
But this allows that a donation to get it probably 18 months ahead of time where we would have. And we're going to evaluate it and see if it's really working. But everybody we've talked to, and it doesn't take long when you see it, the fan technology is just not that exciting. But when you.
I was prepared for a question.
When you, when you see that, it was.
Made the point.
When we started looking at them and I came back, I said, chief, we gotta, we gotta look at getting these.
How many fans do you have?
We have five electric fans, there's one on each of the engines and one on the ladder truck.
Okay.
I'm just stunned by 20 to 25 amps to get the thing started.
It's started. It's an old type motor. No one's ever thought, fan technology's not that exciting. It's worked.
That's why we don't use them on house current. We can't, cannot.
The surge, it's just that surge when it first comes on.
Yep. And they're older, too, so they're starting to break down.
The old ones are 110, though?
110. Yeah.
Well, we, we have them on a, we don't, we can't even connect them to.
What we do is we've changed the plugs on ours to a twist lock, so it only ties into our.
Our systems.
Our generator system, so nobody can accidentally plug it into a house.
So have you looked into replacing them, other replacement fan systems? I mean, $3,500 a unit sounds kind of high.
There's.
Obviously, what you have needs replaced. I don't have any problem with that. I don't really even have a problem with going with this one. I'm just curious as to.
The ones we looked at, and there's some out there, but they don't have the CFM volume that this one has. They don't have the battery backup and the battery life to deploy. And why we really pushed this one is that we have neighboring towns that have used them and have proved them. The captain that Assistant Chief was mentioning, he has a lot of friends in Boston, and Boston has changed over to those, and they've been using those quite effectively. So I'm looking at the unit itself, the longevity, the weight, and then it has now proven itself in larger departments. So that's kind of.
It's not experimental.
It's not experimental type thing. And some of the other ones we looked at haven't, they're not that readily available out there.
Some of the other units that you're talking about to get that kind of CFM or larger, you're talking about gasoline-powered units. Now you're introducing carbon monoxide into an atmosphere you're trying to clear.
Yeah, but you blow it out with the exhaust.
Right.
Any other questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to accept and expand the donation received from Digital Federal Credit Union, our thanks, by the way, in the amount of $3,500 for the Merrimack Fire Department to be used toward the purchase of a BH-20 portable, electric, and battery-operated ventilation fan pursuant to RSA 3195B and Charter Article 8-15.
Seconded. Motion made by Tom Mayhan, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any questions or discussion?
Just to echo Councilor Mayhan's comment, the thanks to DCU for being a good corporate partner and working with us and working with the fire department to provide this tool. And I hope that the chief would be willing to generate a letter to them expressing thanks from the community.
Anyway, right?
Yeah. I just got to get it out there.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Six zero zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Chief AC, thank you.
Okay. We have, it's in the bank. Okay, we have minutes, three sets of minutes.
Madam Chair, move the Thursday, January 26, 2017 Town Council Meeting Minutes as presented.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by?
Don't you, all jump at once, thank you.
Tom Mayhan, any changes? Yes, as written. Okay, all those in favor of accepting as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Six zero zero. January 30.
Madam Chair, move the Thursday, January 30, 2017 Town Council Meeting Minutes as presented.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by?
I'll second them, but I have a question. How many people know what a viva voce?
Viva voce.
Yeah, that.
Voice.
What that is.
Voice vote, in Latin.
No, that's not what it is in Latin, but that's close. It just says as done vocally. And it seems to me out of place in this context of our council meeting minutes. We should just say by voice vote, or roll call, or something like that.
Okay.
I don't understand why we would throw in a Latin phrase all throughout our minutes here, personally.
So you're suggesting just say a roll call vote, voice roll call vote?
Yeah, in English, so that we can all understand it.
It's okay with me. Anybody has?
Oh, no, no, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Huh?
There's a difference between a roll call vote and a voice vote. A roll call vote, you call the names. A voice vote, it's just yays or nays.
Correct.
So it's a.
So what's the correct?
It was a roll call vote.
It was a roll call vote, yeah.
Yeah.
Close to a.
Change, I'll just say roll call vote. Everyone agrees to that?
I would prefer that, yeah.
Yep, that's fine with me. Abiba.
Viva voce, or whatever it is, yeah.
I didn't know if that was sort of that legalese.
I tried to get the computer to tell me how to pronounce it and it came up with about six different ways to pronounce it. So I was like, why bother? I mean, any, any way you wanted to accent it, it came up with that same thing, so.
Any other changes? Saying none. All those in favor of approval with the changes suggested related to the roll call vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Six zero zero.
Madam Chair, I move the Tuesday, February 14, 2017 Town Council Meeting Minutes as presented.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, seconded by Finley Rothaus. Any changes? Saying none. All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Six, none opposed. Six zero zero. Comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council. Tom, Finley, you want to say something, too?
Well, is this Tom's last meeting?
No, it's not.
It's one more.
Not yet.
Okay.
Then again, you never know.
At least one more, if not two.
You've got one more before the elections in April. We have the 23rd or something.
The 23rd, of course.
And of course, a deliberative session, too.
Well, my focus was more on that deliberative session.
We have time to do the roast, Finley.
I want to, yeah, thank you, Bill. That's, I couldn't wait. But no, I, for our deliberative, I was at the school district deliberative session with about eight other people who didn't have to be there. And it was probably, I think it was a record holder now. It was a 15-minute meeting.
13 minutes.
And it was, it was quick. So I'm hoping that for our deliberative session, truly because of the highway garage, that we have a greater attendance and a lot of interest in the highway garage, which for many reasons is very important and necessary. Difficulty for us in April, for the highway garage, is as Tom had pointed out, where every, every office is uncontested, turnout is likely to be quite light. So my mission is to try and encourage everybody to have their say, whichever way it is. I'm hoping, in fact, it is in favor of it and so be there for the 15th for the informational component of that. Thank you.
Anybody ask? Tom?
Yeah. Finley, the reports of my death are greatly exaggerated, to borrow a quote from Mark Twain.
What, do you want to write?
No. No. No, the other thing I wanted to say is I wasn't here at the last meeting because I attended the graduation of my nephew from Air Force basic training in San, in Lekeland Air Force Base in San Antonio. So in addition to the marvellously warm weather, it was rather an extravaganza compared to what happened when I was in the Army in 1969. We, it was an hour. You marched in, you marched out, you were done. You know, I mean, this was, you know, the whole big deal. The other thing was, he was an undergraduate. So, you know, a very motivated young man. There were a lot of, a lot of motivated people there. 750, they're turning out 750 new personnel every month, every week down there. So it's rather, you know, interesting to see the whole thing. And the other thing was, they had all these old airplanes around the parade ground. I could identify all of them. I know that one and that one. So anyway, yeah, thank you very much. So that's all I've got.
Excellent. Did you want to say something, Tom?
Yeah, the planning board met this past Tuesday. It was one public item on the agenda of a relatively simple lot line, a lot subdivision from one lot into two. But they also started to make a formal effort to look at the master plan implementation and keep on track with that. The Community Development Department has finally gotten to a position where it's fairly stable and fairly solid with the staffing that they have. You saw Jillian here tonight. And so Tim feels more comfortable now being able to focus on that as a driving force. One of the things the committee, the planning board decided to focus on was DW Highway Corridor, and how do we develop that? And do we do anything more as far as mixed use or planned use developments and things of that nature, along with focusing any thought on sidewalks and whatnots to DW Highway at this point, realizing that sidewalks throughout town are not something that's going to happen. But they are trying to move forward to at least address those. Some of the things that you find in the master plan are the energy savings that, you know, we've already obviously started with the street lights and things of that nature. So there's been a lot of things that have been started or functionally moved forward, but not consistently driven and strategically driven. So they're starting that focus to try and go a little more in-depth than they have in the past.
More intentional, kind of.
Right, instead of accidental. That's about it.
Oh, I just wanted to thank the members of the police department that were at the Special Olympics this past weekend. Winter Olympics were held up in Waterville Valley again. The kids that did show up had a great time, including my son. And they, they all really enjoy it. And I know at least one officer was there from Merrimack. I don't know, I didn't get a report on all of them that were there. But, but thanks for taking the time to be a part of that.
Excellent. Jackie?
I do have a comment. The Town Center Committee goes around to the farmer's market and any events with our MACs that are right behind there that you've all seen, and encouraging people to use the trails and so forth. And I just want to comment that the farmer's market is a wonderful thing. It's indoors, of course, and at the.
For now, yeah.
Community center. And it's very poorly attended. And I think that just people just need a reminder that it's there. And Mr. Minor has his meat there. I got these two-inch pork chops. And the, the animals, of course, are humanely grown and so forth, and the wonderful greens that were available. So I would encourage people to remember that even though it's cold out, that there are wonderful things inside.
Now, it's Wednesday afternoons, is that correct?
Wednesdays, yes, thank you.
Three to six?
Wednesdays, three to six.
At the Jan, the O'Leary Center?
The O'Leary Center.
Okay, I take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Bill Boyd, seconded by Tom Mayhan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Don't see any opposition. Six zero zero.